Go ahead, go into the Slack channel for 01: Welcome to Slack. Introduce yourself. Let us know who you are, what you do, ask any questions you like.
What are you even talking about? 01: Welcome to Slack.
Reload the page if I want to. Reload, right?
Alright, so this is the first thing we'll do. On the channels... Where are your channels? There's twelve channels. So, this is the thing about Slack that drives people nuts.
Perfect timing.
Alright. Basically, there's a whole shitload of channels that you could join, but don't do that. Be selective. Only join the stuff you actually give a shit about. Otherwise, you're just gonna keep getting notifications that drive you nuts. And later, we'll show you guys how to shut those notifications down in general, so it's only like a call-out. And also, set your times. For example, you can basically have on and off hours. So if you don't want messages past ten o'clock at night, you can set that function. But we'll get into that. So, everyone join 01: Welcome to Slack and introduce yourselves. Okay. So here we go. Second agenda item. We consented the agenda from the last one, and basically, there was only one thing that was really voted on, and it passed unanimously, and that was Joey was gonna be the secondary to the Central Committee. So I'm technically the primary rep for that, and he's secondary, so if I can't make it, he goes in. Okay? Technically, Don, we have to approve the minutes from last meeting.
We will approve. Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Alright, both passes. Item number three. Does anybody wanna do public comment? And we'll start here, and I personally don't have one to give, but if you want, we'll go around the table one minute, and if you don't have a public comment question or statement, go. So Wes, you good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Christina? Tyler? Heidi? Drew? Joey? Tyson? Clark?
Day before the NFL season, go Falcons.
No. I'm feeling it. Hey, after that Super Bowl, I'm feeling guilty for you.
Alright, we're gonna have a public comment.
Wait, I had a comment. Shameless plug, those guys have a face for a podcast, Dollar a Pound. Like their podcast, cannabis-related stuff. And my podcast, Call It What You'll Listen, we just do straight local politics. What's it called again? Call It What You'll Listen, I got cards.
In fact, type in the address in the...
Oh, please.
And make a comment on the side.
You're gonna be funny, Brian, is it...
Welcome to our...
Comment and cons pops out of nowhere.
Boy, you may as well throw me in on that list too. Video version.
Do you want your YouTube channel?
Yeah.
Alright, throw it on there.
Slide over just a little bit, so they see something on sight. If you guys wanna actually comment on things, 'cause he's the only one who... Him and I are the only ones that actually have comment privileges on this for the actual editing side, but you all have basic comment privileges. So if you want, highlight whatever section it is, and basically, go up to... Click on this guy. Scroll down. See this thing up here as well? That's... Oh, it's different on my... Yeah, if you wanna make the comment, go to more. Go here, and... What is it?
What are you trying to do?
Show where the actual comment section is if you wanna make a comment.
Yeah.
No, that's just to show the previous list of it. This, up here, will show the chat, but... That's weird, let me see.
Not sure.
Go, scroll up to the top, actually. There's... Want to know how to comment this document? Scroll down. Yeah, close that one.
What's that one? Is there anybody go back? Now, also, I need one of those.
Can I re-cushion the page?
Yeah, this one, this guy. This is the little comment button, so highlight the section that you want, and then you can actually make a comment. We hit the toolbar, so it's way easier. So if you see something in the agenda, you can do it, but that way, it doesn't actually damage the integrity of the document itself, and we can actually approve or deny those comments later, like edit them or change them. So that makes it really efficient for notes. So if you guys on your end, on your cellphones, your laptops, wanna do that, you've got a comment, just go ahead and make it. So Dom, yeah.
Where do we get a sourdough?
Sourdough?
Yeah, sourdough.
Sourdough, yeah.
Please.
So I'll go through... What we're doing for item number four. Each one of these has a hashtag SC that stands for subcommittee, and then the actual subcommittee name after that. And in the campaign side of things, I joined the Central Committee, and then I also joined the Campaign Committee. And currently, we got something coming up on October 7th. There's gonna be basically an introduction for anyone who wants to run for office. This is kind of what you need to know, and this is how it's gonna work, and we're currently looking for a location to do it. So, we're gonna talk to Alan Hoffa about possibly doing it at Cal State University Monterey Bay, 'cause his wife is a biology teacher over there. She actually was a biology teacher that had Aiden Shams, who's one of our friends from Monterey County Normal, a really tall, skinny kid that is a biology, like, genius major. And it's a small world, so...
So back up, what's this thing happening on October 7th?
It's basically a Winning Ways Running for Office orientation.
And for like potential candidates?
Yeah, so if you're interested in running, and you wanna know how that process works, that's pretty much a great opportunity to learn more about it. And there's a whole bunch of campaign books I'd actually like to recommend you guys separately from this later on, if you're interested on it. In fact, Tommy, I think I have a bunch of those as well. Also, if you're gonna run, I would suggest doing this. Get the Guide to California Government. It literally is one of the best books ever written on political science, so if you wanna know how the government works in California, get this book, 'cause when you're a politician, it sucks if you actually get elected and you don't know shit about how things work, which is unfortunately, we have with our current president. So basically, the next one is the Cannabis Scoring System. That's item B under Agenda Item Four. Click on that, open that document up.
Do you guys mind if I move Michelle?
Yeah.
Don't touch her.
I love the dress. It's working great for him, but... We forgot to put her picture by Mary.
Alright, so in California specifically, these politicians that we have, we're gonna rank every single one of them. And we came up with a list of questions the last meeting, and ended up putting them into this document to kind of organize and prioritize them. So, questions, for example. Did they support the poll memo in principle? And the poll memo's the thing that kind of opened it up a lot for us. In the state of California, go back historically, did they vote in favor or against or abstain, or just didn't vote at all, 'cause they didn't even know about it, Prop 215? And then later on, there was Prop 19, Prop 64, which is the most recent one, yes?
Hundred characters or hundred words? Hundred characters is like six to fifteen words.
Pretty much, hundred characters. I mean, we could open it up to a thousand characters, it's an arbitrary number. So here, highlight that section, make a comment, ask that question in there, and then we can discuss that or build it in later.
And that's short of that in a tweet, isn't it?
Hundred and forty is a tweet, so yeah, it's pretty small. In this form, we're gonna give them a chance to explain how they voted, and keep in mind, when we send this to them, the majority of these politicians will not respond to that unless we aggressively go in there and like hound them about it. But a lot of these people that we think are pro-cannabis now, if you look at their history, they've actually been against it historically. So, it's kind of a problem. And this scoring mechanism, we have to determine how this is gonna play out. And keep in mind, we should only be ranking them on the voted sections later on, based on if they're actually in office in time and have the ability to vote. So... Scroll down a little bit more, let's see if we get a section. Yeah. Scroll down. In the county of Monterey, we wanna know if they voted in favor of... And there's a couple of other ones that we can build in there, and there's also cities. So if it's a person who's actually a city council member, we can check them on that as well. For example, Alan Hoffa actually abstains from... Not abstain, he was one of the few dissenting votes that was in favor of the city of Monterey actually having like cannabis operations, going back a couple of years. But of course, there wasn't enough votes to actually pass it. With the change that's coming, there's gonna be a lot of different candidates that go up there. When we go back into this thing, the Winning Ways thing, 'cause I'm on the Campaign Committee for this, for the Monterey Central Committee, the only metric we rank these people on is cannabis, okay? We're not gonna rank them on whether they're pro-life or pro-choice, how they fall on DACA, any of the rest of that shit. The only thing that we rank them on is what their actual stance on cannabis was. So it's gonna be nice that I'm actually gonna be in there, because I'm gonna be able to kind of early-vet these people as it is. And the thing that they're gonna want from us is, one, our endorsement, and we become powerful enough to have members that actually pay attention to us. And second, they're gonna want our money, because those of us in the cannabis industry have access to extraordinary amounts of money that they're gonna wanna get a hold of. So they will pay attention, and it's gonna be an impressive thing. So, scroll down just a little bit more. What do you guys think of these questions, and what questions should we actually add to it?
Do you wanna start with comments about adding what to add to it?
Yeah. What would you guys like to add for questions under future?
What is this suggestion?
What was that?
What is a comment? Oh, in the agenda.
Jump back to the actual...
So we're talking about the scoring system?
Yeah, we're talking about the scoring system. This is like a base outline for questions to ask potential candidates for different levels of office. There's like one...
I added it to future, is that right?
My question is like, what would be best... Is it best to like, highlight the most important questions and keep it short and simple? Like, one, two questions max? Or do we wanna like put them through the wringer and make sure they actually know their shit on cannabis?
Put them through the wringer. Because they're gonna just give us the simple can't answer, like, "Oh yeah, I'm for it, and especially for medical cannabis, but you know, I think we need to study how the effects of adult abuse actually works, and I'm mostly concerned about the impact it will have on the children." That's the typical can fucking response we always get.
Roger Goodell.
So what we really want is like, hey, like, if cannabis goes through in your county or your city, things like, how do you wanna spend the taxes? Should it be earmarked, should it just go to general funds? What kind of limits do you want? Do you think it should be market decides, and you have as many dispensaries making a run at it? Or should it be capped at three dispensaries? And should that cap be based off of like thirty thousand people? So the point of actually asking these questions to them, we're training them, we are educating them. We're actually taking it to that next level, not the superficial cursory sort of bullshit, but actually, how should this actually work as a regulated market? And the nice thing is, when we get those answers, we're gonna hold them accountable to it going down the line. And the other thing is, a lot of these people say, "Oh, I'm for cannabis, I'm totally down for it." And then you look back at their history, and like, no, you voted against every single one, and the only one you voted in favor was one that had some absurd thing like a fifty percent tax off of gross receipts, which is not really legalization or regulation in a good way, because that guarantees it's gonna stay in the black market, and it absolutely screws businesses trying to get into it. So these are the big kind of questions. And some people, they're gonna be concerned about how pesticide use works. Others are gonna be like, how does this help the black market if we do this? It's like, actually, the more you legalize and the cheaper the tax rate is, the less of a black market exists. So by gauging them with these questions, we are programming them, hopefully, in our favor for what we consider a decent regulated market, which is still gonna be something to debate over the course of the next few months, if not years. Alright? So any questions you have on that, anyone you wanna ask? Just say it out there. Yes?
So I already added, what level of taxes should be placed on cannabis? And then how many permits should be allowed for your city?
Wait, where did you put it?
It's on the sidebar.
Scroll down.
Might have to refresh to get the next one.
What are we talking about?
That's it.
For future.
What level are you talking about? So this is city, both of these?
So what level of taxes? So, for example, if we're talking about cultivation. Cultivation is based on what, square footage?
It depends where you're at. Some do square footage, some do gross receipts, and some have kind of this weird hybrid split.
So that's a generic question, but we can drill down on it, when we're doing it specifically for the...
What was the second one?
How many permits should be allowed for the city?
Well, honestly too, I think a lot of those questions, being honest, you're talking about, how do we vote for the economy? We're gonna tell them how it should be there. We have to tell them, we're creating the industry, we're the ones who are really making this happen.
But at least if they're smart, they'll know to lie there.
They'll know what?
They'll know they either lie there, or they're gonna be honest.
Well, when they don't have the answer, that's when we explain to them what is a better system. So that's why we have to give them that chance to say, what's your actual take on it? And then if they don't have one, or they don't know, we educate them.
They'll know what their answer is to me in a way.
So they'll do it?
Yeah.
What was that?
Just tell them you disagree, or you believe in that.
At that point, we just take it in, and then when we go back to them, we actually talk later. We're like, actually, you put this down here, and we understand, you think it should be taxed at like thirty percent, but in reality, then we actually start showing up with our white papers and being like, yeah, this is an example of like North Las Vegas versus Central Las Vegas, for how they set up their system. This is what worked, this is what didn't. And then we try to change their mind. Because some of these people, by the way, we're not the first people to talk to these people generally about cannabis. I mean, in the center part of the state, a lot of them don't really have much experience, but along the coast, pretty much every one of these counties and cities has been hit up by cannabis operators, one way or another. So, the programming is already going on as it is, we're just gonna try to steer, bless you.
So are you proposing this like questionnaire format as like something you give them in the first place? Or should it be something that you save for like, again, an endorsement situation?
I think it's kind of stats, right? You can immediately look at somebody, and then now just judge them. No, that's a rough...
You've got your survey... You can draft in mind right now, like, think about that, it's pretty much it.
Yeah, I'm thinking my fantasy football draft, right? On the, like, you know, you look at a person, they've got five different stats, yardage, you know, whatever, touchdowns, whatever it is. So now we can just bring up...
Who's good on cultivation, who's good on distribution?
Who wants more permits? And who wants less permits? Who wants more regulation? Who wants less regulation?
And by doing this, we also get the quotes on it. So, and honestly, we should've actually changed it to a hundred and forty characters, because we can actually quote them on Twitter and other places, and say, this is their direct quote from what they said. So when we send this form, it'll go to their staffers, and we actually have to call them up, and sit down and talk to them, or have them fill it out. And by the way, a lot of them will just not fill this out. They will not wanna go on the record for this at all. So, it's not gonna be a perfect hundred percentile, but we're gonna give every one of them the opportunity.
Just wait, go to one of the fundraisers and ask them.
Well, we gotta check for a hundred bucks or a pot, then I'll answer it, so...
Put one spot.
Alright, so...
Do you wanna open it up more?
Any other questions or comments on that?
I would add on federal banking regulations.
Put it in. You gotta edit it, you just drop that one right in, that's a great one.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Are the... I'll tease this, and does anybody wanna say anything? You wanna know one? Alright, hold on.
So I'll make the means of... I'll take a sip of sourdough with you.
Yep. And I got one coming for you. I think that federal was too pretty strict. Questions like, do you want to...
Definitely have a side business coming around, right?
Instead of top, it stands, you're achieving better...
Are we just talking about our local representatives?
No, this is for the whole nation. Like, everyone, all the way up down. So even some people that aren't elected officials, uh, we're gonna own them.
Just wanted to see what... Sorry, it was, do you support descheduling? And to what extent do you support legalization or just decriminalization?
Do you support removing it from Schedule I? Which also answers your banking question.
Banking question, yeah, that's true.
Couldn't we ask local people that as well? Because I mean, they could at least put forth a resolution.
Well, here's the thing, local people are smart. They would actually do a city-based bank that allowed for cannabis, and then they...
Make a bunch of money.
All the money...
Make so much money.
Oh my god. And...
We're not...
Smart is not...
It's scary as fuck.
It'd be a good pitch for the county, though, you can sell all the money they're taking in already, and all the money counters and shit they have to deal with.
Think about... And so, this stuff that they paid for to be taxed and voted.
Yeah, and that's like, yeah, that's some people...
So could we add that to the local one, then?
Uh, removing it from Schedule I?
Well, that's a... That's a liberal question, so if anybody can answer that, so you can be in favor or against it. The locals can never get a chance to be really vote, that's a positive.
But like Dom said, they can show where they stand by passing a resolution.
They can pass on resolutions and stuff like that, and at least try to...
Pester.
They can pester the...
Better than not saying anything.
Well, like, say a mayor, the mayors meet at the national conferences, the statewide conferences, the regional conferences. And this is stuff where they can caucus on, and try to pester the higher officials to say, hey, our community needs this. So if it's something we can interview on, then we can pester on, alright, doctor, next time you go to LCC or whatever, they have the California cities, you know, and you and some of the mayors get together, and heckle whoever your reps are.
By the way, the California league of cities, it really should be the California league of counties and cities, but they also pitch to them as well. They did a... Last year, they did basically a presentation over, I think it was actually at Portola Plaza, on how to turn on or turn off cannabis-based businesses in your municipality. And they basically gave them a blueprint, like, if you want it to act it, if you actually wanna have businesses, this is how to do it. If you don't wanna do it, this is how you do it. And a lot of people feel that they basically push hard against the cannabis industry, and there's probably some factual evidence to prove that, but they gave local municipalities the option to do it. So, the smaller you go, like, at the national level, the idea is, the United States of America, so we're states, and originally, the states were supposed to have more power than the federal government was. But when the federal government started bailing out states, when they got into shitty disasters and whatnot, they became beholden to them, they sort of agreed. So they started matching up with the actual federal policies. And originally, the states should've had some more sense of autonomy to do what they wanted, to determine this. And the reason why it's broken up this way is because the states are basically labs, little experiments of democracy, where you see what works and what doesn't, and if it does, then it should hopefully go up to the actual national level and get endorsed by them, and push that to press. Well, that same logic kind of applies from the states, because the states, they pass the buck down to the counties and the cities, but they don't necessarily have to deal with it and all the bullshit that comes with it. So they always keep passing it down. And then what ends up happening is the local level, they say, oh, we're waiting to figure out what the national level does, or what the state does before we make our move. So both of them are saying like, we can't make a move until the other one does, so it's this bullshit paradox that they fall back upon. Some counties that are more progressive and think in grander terms of what the future is, like in Monterey County, they were super progressive and at the top of the game when it came down to it. Granted, if it wasn't an hack deal situation, we still don't have outdoor grows, for example, but we have an extraordinary amount of commercial greenhouse grows in this area, and we're basically gonna surpass the entire Emerald Triangle just in this one county alone. So, this kind of shit happens in a big way. So, the next thing, let's jump back into the agenda. I'm gonna go down the campaign books. I linked in the Political Campaign Best Reference. This, if you wanna run for office, click on that link and show them what it looks like. Just the same one that you have, Dom, by the way. And in a couple of... A few years back, when they actually had... Oh, you can cross this way, but... All gifters. Uh, they actually had a... Yeah, just open it up. Like, this event, it was actually based off of the previous one that they ran, how to run for office. And they had something like two hundred people show up to it. So there's gonna be a ton of people that actually wanna run for some seat, or do something like that as it is.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Did I hear something about a county in Southern California that actually now has a quote-unquote pot commissioner? Is that something that I heard that actually...
Counties and cities have these things known as potzars?
In LA, right, yeah, there's actually like an appointed official that now handles all... It's like the food guy, the food inspector, except for one.
San Francisco just got one too, Santa Cruz already has one.
Santa Cruz hired one last year. LA, remember that chick that that company went to? She was like that lesbian black chick?
Which one?
That company went to Sacramento?
We knew a couple, uh, but is she cool?
Yeah, she's super cool. That's why I'm surprised she got the position, because she's like perfect for it. She's super down for the industry.
Oh, we should call her out. You know, we should actually add, um, potzars too, to how they stand on it, but that's really good to actually...
South of California, I wanna make that protest.
That's an unelected official?
Well, no, but I'm thinking like, what if you added, like, if someone's running, if you wanna know where a county supervisor stands, like, have a question made, do you support creating a position to coordinate all the cannabis industry? Something like that.
Monterey should certainly handle it.
They should.
I mean, I'm thinking more locally, obviously, but like, I'm sure there's tons of counties in California that don't.
I'll give you an example, in Monterey County, the planning department got overwhelmed with the number of applicants, because they required like fucking three hundred-page binders, applications, and they had to go through, and they vetted it. And at the same time, unfortunately, Monterey County, um, they had a lot of people basically move on to different jobs, not because they were against cannabis, or they had problems, or they were just... They were admins, they're making flat rate, and they got a better job, or they got sick and tired, or they got fired. So there's a huge turnover, and it became a bottleneck for processing the paperwork at the county level. They supposedly caught up to it at this point, but an actual department, if it's efficiently run... Keep in mind, every time you make a new government agency to run something, that can really go wrongs, but if it's handled correctly and set up properly from the beginning, that'll streamline the process and make it far more efficient and logical as far as how they deal with people, and have like rational responses. And it alleviates the strain on the regular planning department as it is to approve permits.
They can get away from specializations.
I don't think they're entirely necessary, though, to be honest, out at this local level.
Not entirely necessary, but if a county's gonna be active...
Who's responsible for alcohol establishment at the local level?
ABC.
At the local level?
Planning Commission hands out the permits.
And that's basically it, right? It's pretty much as far as enforcement, making sure they're accountable for what they said they do. It's the state government.
Police and ABC. You know, it's up to the police.
I would think that'd be better for us, the candidates would shoot, one less bureaucrat trying to say, oh, if you did this, you didn't do that.
Yeah, but what's better, having one bureaucrat, or having like one bureaucrat from ten different agencies?
Having at least one.
But I think in this case, because you're gonna have more of an microscope on you, you'd rather have somebody who's like this speed on, so that they're not gonna come in not knowing everything they should know, lots of fucking shit on them. If you have somebody come, and they're appointed from like the Bay, well, Monterey is pure ag. You're gonna want... They're gonna put in a conservative pure ag guy, but they're gonna know ag. And so they're at least gonna be up to speed on the issue, so that hopefully, it's just gonna come down to matters of, okay, what are the things, what are the standards we need? You know, would be business licenses, standards for cultivation and greenhouses, or whatever.
Basically, you're saying it'll streamline the process more or less, just by having to answer it's not formatted already. Then we're not just...
And then they'd rather only have to deal with the state, than just having to deal with a bunch of other people.
But at least if they're local, you can always get them.
Yeah, that's the testing then.
And they're...
I want you to like, what's going on?
I'm like, nothing to do with that. It's true that, and so local reply, check in, and...
Yeah.
Did you wanna say anything else about this? I'll have to check on it.
It makes sense in a place like LA, it would be... They'd wrap that like fifteen hundred...
Person or...
...like maybe, so, that's a little more understandable.
So I'm just gonna say, see the doc, come on, do the ag commissioners. Any other... Does anybody else maybe have like campaign training materials to offer for this thing?
Hillary's book has been very good, it changed her life. I make a bunch of... I wrote that we bought by copies, I'm only sad that apparently I wasn't enough to actually read the book. At least everybody read it.
This is the first candidate for it, so I agree with her.
She was wronged. She was wronged. We have moments, Silas.
There it was.
Shall we move on to item five?
Item five is... Okay. So, communications chair, last month, I spent as much time as possible trying to reach out to all the other clubs under the Monterey County Democrats as it is. And so the first one I joined was the Central Committee. The second one I joined was the Monterey Peninsula. The third one I joined was technically progressives. I reached out to Salinas, but I have not gotten a single response. I've reached out to Salinas, but I have not gotten a single response.
I didn't allow them to.
Salinas, yeah, I, I never got a response from them. Uh, I didn't, they had like 100 people or something, so, I mean, I literally called up Luis Leal's office himself and I was like, yeah, hook us up. We're still going to keep reaching out, like, the problem is, we don't talk to each other and there's an extraordinary amount of people on both sides. Yes, 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 I know, we can run camp, so watch out. So, like, the thing is, we have to get these people on board. So what I ended up doing is, um, when I joined the Central Committee at the last meeting, I noticed the IT department was non-functional. It didn't have a chair, it didn't have any people. And I just nominated myself to do it, and they're like, yeah, sure, and I'm like, is there anything I need to do? And they're like, no, if you want to do it, just do it. And I'm like, alright, cool, great. So, basically, I set up the Slack for the Monterey County Democratic Central Committee, and then I invited all the people I could find and all their emails, and I sent them access to it. So there is actually a separate Slack for the Monterey County Democrats, okay? We have our own, they have theirs. They're very similar, so don't get confused if you join one or the other, because you're going to see both of them on the same, basically, SC kind of style list. So, there'll be subcommittees that are basically paralleling each other for the most part. The Infrastructure Committee, though, uh, primarily is Slack, and that's, you know, what we're using right now as well, it's the Google Drive stuff and a couple of other things. And IT, honestly, uh, when I renamed it to Infrastructure, IT should actually handle the website. That's currently being handled by the Communications Director, her name is Erin Fox, and she's been doing a really good job. In fact, the website template that they use is also, um, X theme with cornerstone. So, that's the same one that we use for our website in itself, so it, it, like, I probably understand their grief, so does Christina certainly, because she takes all my crazy orders and like, no, change this, I'm going to say, do this, do this, move it around. So, we're going to try to reach out to them, because they have an email list of 10,000 people. Keep in mind, we can already get the email list for the county as it is for some of the people that we're going to end up running down the line. If they join Nation Builder, which is a website specifically geared to political, uh, candidates as well as issues, if you will, and they have huge lists of all the voter registrations that already exist for the Democrats and the Republicans. We get access to those lists, because if you run a candidate in an area, they'll automatically grant you to it if you build a website. We can pull that, we can actually talk to all the registered voters over here for either one of the parties. So it's a fantastic tool to talk to an extraordinary amount of people. Um, as far as, I also joined the Monterey Women, so I know Regina, Regina Gage over there. And I also helped set up the Young Democrats Club here, and that's being chaired by this, uh, woman named Natara. She's like 17 years old, she goes to, I believe, MPC, she's very smart, she's also Alan Hoffa. Alan Hoffa, by the way, is the Monterey City Council member, he's a really smart savvy guy, and he runs the Central Committee as well, basically, Democrats here. And, we met here, and I donated $50 to her cause, so that she could have pizza, and they're going to have an event coming up on the 23rd. And the young people, unfortunately, have not been engaged properly in either party, they're just kind of abandoned. Uh, and so I'll give you, I'll give you a weird example. If you register people that are young, they have a higher tendency to vote liberal slash Democrat. Uh, Republicans, they tend to be older, unfortunately, I mean, you know, maybe not so good, because I'll get old too someday, they will die. So they're literally losing members by death, okay? It's not just general attrition because they're bored, it's like, they just, they're not alive anymore. So the more young people you register, the better. And this brought up a weird conversation, I was actually at the Monterey Fairgrounds with Kayla and Ian Oglesby. And, you know, Oglesby is, uh, Seaside, and Kayla, the Seaside Planning Commission, and Kayla is actually a civic council member. She's like 23, 24, uh, she's like the darling of the party, she's very smart. And she had an interesting idea about actually the fact that we're technically an unchartered city in Seaside versus some of the chartered cities. So a chartered city has to technically match up to what the state supposedly has as far as cause. And one thing that would be really efficient, for example, if we wanted to have everybody here automatically register to vote based off of their address, if they're living in Seaside on their driver's license, we could actually push initiative to automatically register every single person in there the moment they're there. So instead of having to go out and do campaign voter registration drives, we run an actual initiative. So here's kind of how the math works, and this is super rough math, so just bear with me on this. And the last, uh, general election here, they had something like 8,000 people that actually turned out a city of 30,000 people. And if we had to get 51% of those 8,000 people to actually sign off on an initiative coming up in 2018, and this initiative was to actually have everybody register to vote automatically based off of their D and B records here, um, we would only need basically 4,000 people, we would need a 20% buffer, so that would be 4,800. And if we're paying our own members or a signature collection team a dollar per signature to go out there, we could literally turn this city on for an automatic registration vote for around $5,000. And I, like, I'll pay for that out of my own pocket, like, right now, I mean, that is the easiest thing to do. Versus some of the grants that they were fighting over in the previous election. Uh, there was an $80,000 grant that Karen Marajo applied for to register people to vote, and Caesar, uh, from the AMLCIO actually won, $80,000 to go register people to vote here. We could do that for $5,000, and people are automatically registered to vote forever in the city. So, these are the kind of options we actually have to go off of, and if we did that, the majority of those people that would actually vote would actually be Democrats here. So, it would be a fantastic technique to actually do, and we can do this in many other areas. So keep in mind, cannabis is not just a local thing here, we set it up to be a national one right from the start, and it's just mimicking all the same mechanisms down the line, from the state to the actual counties to the cities. So those are some of the options that we're going to have coming up for, uh, a lot of this. Now, I want to ask questions. Does anybody have contact with who's running Greenfield, at all? Who?
That's David Kong.
David Kong, is he cool?
He, he's on the Labor Council, he's classified staff rep, uh, and he's on the Central Committee. Uh, a person to reach out to from the Greenfield Club, because I imagine she's a member, is Nellie Martinez, who's a council member. She's been all over the place, she was at the Marina Charlottesville thing, the Salinas one, she was at Watsonville. She is more than willing to get out to our stuff. She would be more than interested, I think, in terms of getting people out of Greenfield, and they just held cannabis-related events on some book.
Yeah, our friend Sel Palmer's group, he's got that one out there, so, okay. The next one, Marina, and by the way, I mean, someday Kevin Saunders is going to be banging on the window outside, hollering, jerking off on Bible. And when that day comes, you get to roll his ass, you're, you're one of you guys. And I'm going to be sitting there with a sign, probably beat him down with his bust over here on Obama. So it's going to be an amazing event, but Marina is going to come online in a big way. Right now, if you wanted to invest in property, 10, 15 years, Marina is going to be epic, it's basically the crush Silicon Valley. And keep in mind, a lot of people want to keep their community the way it is, small-town American bullshit, but in reality, we keep reading, and we're not stopping, and there's a shitload of money crushing after Silicon Valley, and Marina is developing like crazy. Eventually, when some genius decides to burn down what's left of Fort Ward, and, you know, children stop stepping on landmines and unexploded ordnances that they dropped over the course of the past couple of decades there, that place will be like Tech Valley slash Orange County equivalent, that's what it's going to look like. It's going to be tiki-tack homes everywhere, but they're going to be very expensive tiki-tack homes. So Marina will open up the Ford dispensaries in a huge way coming up down the line. And currently, I think the only reason, honestly, they haven't is because you have people like Kevin Saunders threatening to punch the police chief's teeth down on Facebook, and shaping his like Reagan sign on the side of the freeway and giving people the finger. He'd go fuck himself on the record and pull me on that, certainly it's going to be...
But it'll be thousands of...
What was that?
2,000 residents, it was fire in 2018.
Wow.
2,000.
That East Garrison, all the way to the movie theater, will be completely filled, 2,000.
Two, for sure.
By what year?
2019 is their goal.
Are they out there?
I mean, I've known, I, I know two people in the ag industry alone that would move, you know, from backside of Star Market up there. Scoot on one, see any...
The big caveat to the grand vision is getting things through Florida, it's always fun.
I think wheels, the wheels, the society get that.
Yeah, CSU will be completely wrapped.
CSU issues are big.
Noise water issue.
So, who's in Marina? Who's running the Marina club?
And I'll say it on record, most of these clubs just exist on Facebook.
Well, we can change that, because for example, somebody brought up the issue, why isn't there a Carmel-by-the-Sea Democratic Club? And I'm like, actually, that's...
Just call the Monterey County Central Committee.
Yeah, but if they had their own little one down there as it is, with how much money they have, I mean, for example, they're not going to have affordable, low-income housing ever over there. That's why they have places like Salinas, that's because of their workforce. But if they actually did, because, I'll give you an example, like, I like this space a lot over here, just because we can actually use it, and it's kind of cool the way it's set up, but the original space that you actually had in the plaza over in old Monterey was way better, even though you didn't have the visibility that you technically have here, there was just a lot more people walking around that are plugged in as it is. So, for example, there honestly should be a Democratic office over in Salinas, and I think there should honestly be a club in Carmel-by-the-Sea, but I'm not setting it up because I don't live there. Uh, the person that brought this up, by the way, in fact, a friend too, they kind of both want it to be set up, so, I don't really know. And the fact that nobody's talking to each other, for example, like, there's, is there a contact list for all of these clubs and these people? Is there every, make a note, we got to make a contact list to actually talk to people that are actually going on with these things, because the, the simple problem is, we keep throwing all these events for all these different clubs, and nobody knows about it. Nobody talks to any of these people. Granted, I know some of you guys don't want to talk to other people because of all the priorities, but we have to.
People are finding, people are finding out about the events, but here's the thing. So say it's an event in Salinas, you're not going to get too many progressive Dems out there if it's in Monterey. If it's a event in Monterey, for Salinas, you're going to get like me, Karen Marajo, Vialejos, maybe Patricia Coit, you know, it's, it's geographical type divisions. Even when we find out the word, we're not necessarily going there all the time, because between the Central Committees, the club meetings, people don't want to go more than once a week, sometimes, with stuff.
Well, we need to...
So better planning.
Well, and also when you talk about areas like Carmel-by-the-Sea, Carmel Valley, like, they have other civic organizations, Rotary Clubs, all that kind of stuff, that they're going to be, Natural History, all of that stuff, that they're more involved in, and they're less likely to give a shit about party policies. Like, they might be Democrats, and they might give money to candidates, and they're all kind, like, that's where the fundraisers happen, is around Carmel, and...
Well, the reason why the two women were concerned about it is because basically, there's actually a Republican group building force out here as it is, because Carmel-by-the-Sea is actually a very unpopular...
Maybe so is the fucking mayor.
But, but here's the thing, the...
If you had an office in Salinas though, like a similar one, like same size space here, and we did it on a street corner over there, you could bipolarly jump back towards, um, the coastal side, to the inland side. And if we actually start using all this amazing, grandadagal technology, we talk to each other and livestream and stuff, uh, people would have a higher turnout online and actually be more engaged. So the problem is, we have all these tools and all these people, but nobody's using the tools to actually talk to them. That's what we're trying to fix here as it is, so...
But I think it would make sense to partner with some of the clubs that are actually doing stuff. The Women's Democratic Club, they do stuff. So, I mean, that's like a natural ally, where if we want to get everybody to be more active, well, they've been the most active so far. So if we work with them to get everybody else...
Now, they were cleverly organized at the beginning, because what they ended up doing is they did a yearly flyer that had a list of all the dates and all the events and all the basic speakers that are going to come in a year in advance. When they print out the flyer, you can see the entire lineup month by month. That's an incredibly savvy thing to do, but it takes a lot of planning and a lot of organization to follow through. So we can get to that point, but we're going to have to build up to it collectively as it is. Yeah, so, as far as clubs, how many of you guys are members of any of these other clubs?
I am.
Which ones?
Me?
Yeah.
Progressives and Central Committee.
Les, what about you, man?
Those two, I guess, um, are Salinas Indivisible as well.
I have a question, is Salinas Indivisible actually a Democratic club or not, because it's not listed on the site?
Yeah, we're not official, I guess we haven't been chartered.
No, 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 no. The indiv, this is a whole nother issue. Depending on the people in the indivisible group, like Monterey, they want to stay nonpartisan, despite the fact that they haven't gone against one Dem yet. They are nonpartisan. The Salinas Indivisible group, you know, it's, it just hasn't come up, because it's a small, you know, we, we do stuff, but they haven't really wanted to officially be a Democratic group, except just indivisible.
Do they want to eventually, basically running the indivisible here as it is?
I think one of the things that needs to happen first is, the party has to start showing that they're doing their own events in the community. Once we can actually point to that we did this, this, and this in Salinas, this, this, and this in Marina, this, this, and this in Monterey, then it's easier to go to some of these groups in indivisible or whatever, and say, look, we're not just an online website anymore. We're actually talking about these issues, I think we're talking about, actually pushing out people. So then maybe, there's no choice.
So I've done meetings with a ton of indivisible groups, and I can just say from experience, if you want to tap into an indivisible group that is affected and they have a massive amount of foot soldiers, hit up your boy Manu, or someone that you know in Santa Cruz.
Fighters.
Yep.
She's the one.
Carson Kelly.
She also works on the Juke Club every year, she's super savvy.
So I'm friendly with Carson Kelly and Andrew Owl of, that's the Owls that own like half of Santa Cruz County. So he, he started like his own little indivisible group, they had like a thousand people. Carson Kelly is like a main organizer for the one now, I guess. They're planning this huge event, you guys should totally go, Resist Fest, I'm blanking on the date, it's like October something.
Put the, put the names and the reminder for the event and look into that and contact them. Part of this communication thing is basically just reach out to all the other clubs and groups, establish alliances.
So, yeah, they're, they're, I mean, when you talk about the party compared to indivisible group in Santa Cruz, you're talking like the party, the last party event I went to in Santa Cruz County, it was like they had like Don Lane come out and talk about affordable housing, which he's super knowledgeable about affordable housing, and he gave a great talk, and there was like 30 people there. Indivisible didn't even have a plan, they were just like, come be pissed off at this place, and like 1,500 people showed up. So, and they've been organizing since then.
What is the primary mission of indivisible right now?
To resist all fraud.
Yeah, so...
And, and what you're, what you're seeing is a lot of them realizing especially that like their reps are on their side, so they can't do the indivisible thing, like, show up and scream and yell at town malls, because everybody's looking to appease them in this area. So a lot of them are turning to like local issues.
As far as, uh, item five, is there anything else, any questions, any ideas?
For the, for the young Dems, if you're older, like my answer doesn't qualify, can we just stay away?
Wait, 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 fair enough.
So for the young Dems, what I'm worried about is, some of the older folks are going to try to come in and make this thing be whatever they feel it should be. I'm just going to reach out to Natara, and I'm just going to be like, you know what, if, if, if you need me, hit me up, and I'll get you what you need, but I'm not going to try to show up at the meetings, because I'm, I'm too old now. They need their space.
I say we just give them money and let them fly.
Yeah, you, you know, I just want to make sure they don't get choked off from a bunch of old people desperate to bring young people in. You know, let's just give them what they need and let them do their thing. You know, that way it's organic and hopefully effective.
They're already doing a pretty good job, Natara, the four people she brought, they have their own stuff. As far as the Monterey Dems are concerned, of all the groups, there's also active ones on Slack right now, that are the actual thing. So if you want to see their progress, I'll give you guys access, technically, because you're members of the Indivens, you also get access to the Monterey County Democratic Slack channel, so I'll replicate your emails and just pass them over so you can see what they're working on. Uh, they're very, they're very fast, they're already building flyers, they have documents, they have their agendas and rules, um, they're savvy, so... They're going to crush it, and if we give them resources, they'll really do a great job, so, yeah. Box them in, just give them everything they need. Anything else on this one? Good? Okay. Next one, uh, Subcommittee on Development, Omar couldn't make it tonight, I met with him actually last night, we got Thai food, and we basically talked about the job fair and fundraiser. So, I'm more keen on the job fair, because if you're going to run for office, it pretty much goes like this. Jobs, housing, and infrastructure slash roads, okay? So, we're going to do a job fair, this is a cannabis-based job fair, there's lots of different opportunities in the cannabis industry, and there's a lot of different positions, everything from cultivators to manufacturers to distributors, the actual admin side of things, it's a whole bunch of third-party funky things as it is. So, originally, we were thinking of possibly doing it in the beginning of November, but because we're running out of time as it is, and that's literally the month right after term's over, which in, in the cannabis industry generally, when you do an outdoor grow, you do all your tripping in October, and you're just, you're packed, there's nothing that goes on in there at all. But then after that, in November, everybody's trying to sell their shit, and then by December, people have gotten pissed off enough, people that they let them go, that they need to find more people for the New Year's bowling in. So if we were actually to do a job fair, all we need to do is basically get a space, we can build out an actual event page for it, yes?
I was going to say, uh, just like first week in December before everyone heads off for New Years and Christmas, sound good? Not to mention with the timing of the city of Seaside, if it is still spearheading for Jan 1, and that'd be a beautiful time for a lot of different reasons.
That'd be great.
Isn't the Las Vegas thing in December?
December, November? Yeah, that's the second one.
Which, if we go there, and Joey and I are going, we already got our tickets and everything, we're just going to walk around and basically like let everybody know that Monterey County is going to have a job fair, and have a fucking huge turnout, because we'll actually have cannabis businesses from other counties showing up here as it is. So, it's, it's a fantastic event, uh, we still have to figure out the logistics of how it costs and what works and all that stuff, yes?
Uh, any ideas for a potential event here?
I was thinking of the Intercontinental, and I was thinking of possibly the NBC Suites, which hopefully they'll be done, they're not going to be done by that timeline as it is.
It's a great bar, I already talked about.
There's a story behind that.
Uh, what if we did the, uh, just... Uh, what if we did the, is, is the tides? The new, the, the one that's running the elbow was something, it was something again. Yeah, used to be Best Western, the one right as you pass, I think that's actually.
I've never been there. They have some nice meeting space and it's actually pretty cheap compared to some of the other Peninsula hotels if members serve. I also, my cousin's also a sales rep at Marriott over, over there where they're getting all the new facilities and stuff, and should probably give me a good deal.
Make some notes about those locations so we can actually look into that. It's gonna be Omar's job, so hustle him.
Yeah, I think Port, I think Porto Plaza's gonna be a little too pricey.
Yeah, I mean, we can also, where we can make, you know, this work and actually the jobs, you know, it's good. The people that show up for the jobs, they're not paying to get in there. Only the people that have tables for their business that pay for it. And we'll handle the intake of all the actual resumes, they're all gonna come in on Google Drive. Which is honestly the best way to do your resume at this point because if you update it, wherever your job people have and they look at their, you know, bin, you know, the people they didn't hire like a year later, it's like, who was that guy who was really good at that thing? And they look it up, they'll see the updated version of it on Google Drive, just like we're doing here. So it's a really simple and efficient way to do that.
Uh, what about, was anyone there for the economic development plan that Seaside did? I don't know the name of the building, but it's a community hall, I wanna say they do like AA there, they do a couple other. It's big, it's like a, like a basketball gymnasium big and they have like all the pictures of like, this is what Seaside would look. It was like the full like, I'm selling you a Monterey, you know, all of those pictures and stuff. So you could, I mean, you could set up tables in that venue, I mean, that'd be the cheapest route.
What's the? Is it, you think about the Old Meyer Center?
I think that's it. I don't know if that's a gym or if that's a theater or what exactly qualified it as.
It's like, it's managed by the City of Seaside, it's only hell cheap.
Great parking.
And it's got good parking, there's like a street parking.
And it's recreation.
If any of you guys went to Monterey Pride, that's where they were set up.
And it's up, it's like up the hill a little bit from here, right? I think that's gonna be our cheapest, that's gonna be our cheapest way and we can just set up tables like this, you know, name of the company.
And keep in mind, Joey, Christina and I, for the CRC, we basically have like a huge list of nine thousand plus females. So we actually do want to produce that. We have an extraordinary reach, basically every cannabis business in the country. So when we actually want to do that, it's like.
So how many, how many people would you realistically expect at something like this?
I would actually want to go look at what the other cannabis job fairs have actually pulled. Um, like Moon Farms or something, they did a couple up there, like on the third or fourth one in a couple of different cities. And they thought it'd only get like a couple of dozen people and have like thousands of people or something.
I don't know what else with that, a bunch of people that would have.
I mean, there's no jobs for young people in the city I live in, in Monterey. And they don't even have young people in Pacific Grove, Carmel by the Sea, they don't even exist or they don't. They send their kids to go to some school somewhere else so they can get addicted to the cocaine as opposed to being in their home. Unless you want to do customer service, you have no job opportunities here unless you have some fantastic degree and have already made a shitload of money and then you come back to this area for the most part. So if we can actually show that there's an established economy here, that we can actually support decent paying jobs, that, that's, that's fucking amazing.
That's true.
So.
How about a fundraiser, you have thoughts on that?
As far as fundraisers go, the nice thing, the advantage we honestly have is the cannabis industry. If you're good people and you're consistent and reliable and provide valuable information, as we have with our other organizations as it is between CGA and Normal, we get a shitload of money, people donating the stuff. And the primary thing that we sell is basically information. So our website, when it officially, officially goes up, people can check that out. We're just gonna call up all of our friends who have cash and be like, "Show up at this event, here it is, good to go." Like the fundraiser we had in, Drew set up a dab bar, that was sick, that was fucking amazing, one of the affiliate awards, yes?
Is this where we should start talking about the, the issues we might have with fundraising?
No, because that, that's in the next item, which is finance, but shoot your socks. Alright, so.
No congressional aid, no.
Alright, any, any more?
That's what I always ask.
Any more ideas of when we should have the fundraiser though? Because here's the thing, you know when people tend to donate the most and join gyms? January of every year, that's where people are out there. So we can hustle them at the beginning of the year. So if we do, if we do the job fair in the beginning of December and then we do the actual fundraiser in January and we like stack that stuff, so it's like rolling thunder, we'll crush it.
After everyone's broke from Christmas.
Pretty much.
I think they also got city parks.
Are we just having parties? Are we gutsy enough to combine a fundraiser with New Years?
No. New, New Years, I don't want to compete against any other events, I don't want to compete against any Halloweens and Fourth of July, nothing.
Let's do our matters.
Now, going into, we're talking finance, so this is between Joey and Dominic and we collectively met with Polly over at Applebee's, was it?
Chili's.
Chili's, I always get that wrong, I can't get it right.
Always saying chavering.
Is there even an Applebee's in Seaside?
Chain food.
Alright, chain food as it was, and she gave us some interesting tips. Uh, because the problem is when you have a cannabis-related business, it's a nightmare to get a bank. So Dominic and I, we submitted the paperwork to the actual state finally to go through this and if we get that and we take it into a bank and they knock us down, we're basically gonna go back in later on and create either a 501(c)(3) or a (c)(4), depending on what we like. That's gonna be a debate we have collectively. And then we'll try to get a bank account with a name that's completely innocuous from cannabis. So right now we're Canada Dems, so it's built into the title. Uh, but we may be like, you know, citizens of the free marketplace or some stupid shit like that coming up down the line.
Citizens for a smarter market.
Citizens for a smarter, whatever. So the banking issue as it is, that's where it's at. And we actually have the forms on the website, which we're not gonna show you tonight though, that shows how much money we've already spent. And the majority of it has basically gone into website development, plugins, maintenance, hosting, the actual name and stuff, and then that food over there, which is like super cheap. So I mean, pancakes, you know, grilled cheese sandwiches, things like that. We have to think larger for when we actually start hosting huge events and we have a shitload of people that turn up. Honestly, I like just grilled cheese sandwiches. When we were at the Vegas Convention, which was, it's like Solomon Gomorrah for cannabis every year for this business conference, we were going from floor to floor to floor at the Palms and there was just parties on every single floor of the Big Bottom. The infamous Meat Gate Incident, we were there for that too, by the way. There was this, this horrible moment where the world overreacted that basically there was a beautiful woman who was a model, who was a food model, which basically they used them as like a serving platter and a bunch of cold cut meats were placed upon her, so it looked like zombie flesh and the pictures were taken really bad with like flash cameras. And everyone went fucking nuts over it. James, he took a picture of it too, that was one of the pictures they used in a lot of the actual posts. So we're not gonna do anything stupid like that, but the nice thing at that event was they actually had a grilled cheese sandwich bar that all these donors in Vegas, when there's all kinds of food they could be eating, they're all over there just chowing out.
And they had tacos.
A tigero is always awesome. Tiggeros. Tiggeros are good.
Alright, so roughly, let's say, job fair early December, first week, and fundraiser maybe second or third week of January, yes?
Be, be aware though, uh, maybe when some people pay attention, football playoffs in January. So do we, do we want to go to conflict playoffs with?
There's a game happening at the end of the year.
Okay.
But the reality about fundraisers, you can't do it until you get a bank account, so that's what gets solved in January.
So we got four or five months.
Because one thing for everyone to know is that, one thing that Holly told us is that we can't accept more than ninety-nine dollars in cash as an organization. So that, the purpose of the fundraiser, if someone wants to give you a large amount of money, you got a bank account.
True.
Are there any kind of separate like packs or anything you consider to accommodate that?
That's pretty much why we have to develop the 501(c)(4) or (c)(4).
And even then, if we get the (c)(4), then it turns into the, we need the innocuous name. Uh, and then it's the whole, instead of say, our club email directly donate to a candidate, you have been financed laws, the (c)(4), if I'm not mistaken, becomes more of an independent expenditure. Support this issue in 2018.
So we basically have to like appoint someone to be like head of the (c)(4) who is like not gonna coordinate with us, but will just like pay attention to what the candidates think about this.
Say that?
So, because there's, there's rules against coordination, right? So you basically have to appoint, like, ask someone to be like, "You can't talk to us," whatever the rules are, to head that separate organization, right?
Kevin Saunders.
It's perfect.
It's kind of weird actually, but super PACs, for example, if we go down that route, which we certainly will, I mean, we've been talking about to go all the way back in the early days of Normal. Uh, super PACs are inherently evil. And they are, if you actually wanted to shove one down, the only way you can do it is if you ran a giant super PAC. And super PACs, and nobody really wants to do that because politicians absolutely love it. And Democrats and Republicans equally use them to their benefit as fast as they can. So if we do a super PAC, technically it's the craziest thing. You're not supposed to actually, for example, promote these people, yet you can somehow have a candidate show up at a super PAC fundraising dinner for that candidate who actually gives a speech about it and you can actually pay that candidate to be an employee.
You can give directly to them, you can give indirectly.
Yeah, but it's, it's so like vague and fuzzy about it.
Speaking fee?
Uh, it's not a speaking fee, they can actually go in there and speak in their benefit and they can. There's, there's a whole book that you sent me about it that'll add into the financial.
Basically, you can't like donate to their campaign, but you can basically do the same function as their campaign does. Like you, you pay for the commercial.
We can, we, we say, the only thing we have to say is it's not endorsed by a candidate, but we can run pro or con against it.
You would say approach X, Y, Z pack.
Yeah, citizens for the free market.
And whoever runs the (c)(4) will have to shame their head and speak with the doctor.
Great.
Either white cat or a nice cat that's a pet there, so.
What shape is all the folk?
Alright, so with the paperwork, when we get it back, we're gonna make a bank, we're gonna be co-signers on it. If they knock us down or they lock it out, because this is the thing that happens, if they close your bank account and for a cannabis business, they'll, they'll give you a cashier's check with the name of your business and you gotta take it over to a different bank, which you don't even have a bank account with a deposit, so it's a fucking nightmare. So the plan is for right now, all the money that comes in, we spend it as fast as we can on shit we actually need instead of building up this big war chest that suddenly gets like cut down with a cashier's check.
And I still need access to like the membership.
You don't have access to that yet? I think you do.
I looked on my Google Drive.
You really might have sent me the link on it though. We, check that as it is, no problem. And then you gotta pay the five bucks, this is the man to give it to because he's the treasurer, so there you go.
My gift to you.
Was that?
My gift to you.
Yeah, you did, you did, so I gotta register that.
You should tell your friends are a lifetime user, have them five bucks.
I know.
So we're good on the finance one for now, any other questions or notes on that? Good? Okay, moving on, number eight. So the infrastructure, and this is, this is, I mean, all the stuff that we're doing right now. So you guys are all good with Slack, the website, we still got about another week before it's gonna be officially publicly consumable. The newsletter, which is the most fantastic tool ever, after this meeting, the first newsletter will go out in about a week or so and I'm gonna show you what the backside of a newsletter analytics looks like. So I'll be able to tell when I send it out to every email in this room, who opened it up, how many times they opened it up, when they opened it up, what links they actually clicked on inside of the newsletter. And the newsletter, I mean, you've seen our newsletter from Normal, that's a fantastic tool. The thing that's coming up with this one, it's gonna like blow it out of the water. And we'll do a nice, organic one with what we have in the first round of release. And then after that, you guys, we're gonna basically force add an extraordinary number of people that we want to talk to. And there's, there's a big group. Christina and I basically are designing a system that breaks down all of the candidates and all of the elected politicians that are already sitting in seats in California. Uh, so at the state level, at the counties, at the cities, and whether they're for or against us, whether you're Democrat or Republican, doesn't matter, we want to see what it is. So the nice thing is, for example, when I put out there a link to an article that, for example, that scoring sheet, politicians are gonna shit themselves on that, you're gonna see an extraordinary number of them that actually open it up because they're gonna want to see like, "Wait a minute, what's going on?" And the technique is, I, I don't like single message, let's hurrah, let's do this because it's the same boring typical shit I see in all the political newsletters. Like back in Michigan, years ago, they added me to every single fucking newsletter that existed and I get new newsletter ads as it is. Technically, it's a violation not to add people without their consent. We're absolutely gonna break them, we're absolutely gonna add all of these people because I really want to see what they're paying attention to. And the cool thing is, the plan is to basically release the newsletter nine AM, Monday mornings, once a week. So on Sunday night, if people have things they want in the newsletter, you're gonna have to go into the Infrastructure Subcommittee Slack channel and say, "I think this should be added" or "I don't think this should be added," and we'll give you a preview of what that newsletter is gonna look like going out the next morning. If you don't get me your little notes beforehand or if you don't sync up with it as it is, I don't give a shit because I'm the one running this thing and I am a fiend when it comes to newsletters. So there's basically broken up into three major things we'll talk about. Whatever the most topical, interesting piece of news is, be it a video, an actual story, a podcast, a document in fact. The next one is, what is the next event for the candidates who we promote ourselves? And the third one, we'll figure out something. So there'll only be three things, power of three, that we use for these newsletters. Then, at every meeting, when we go back in for the Infrastructure section under item eight, I will show you the backend to actually shame those of you that didn't open up the newsletter here and show you all the politicians that do. So for example, in the Monterey County Normal about a year ago, we released this tax document that came from this company called HDL. And that was a, a public information request that Joey actually made to one of the guys. And when we put that in there and we actually linked the document with a nice little picture, so like we're very visual when it comes down to these things, so we really want to grab their attention. He opened it up like something like thirty-two times. So like we guaranteed, no, he was paying attention to that one specific item. And both are our allies and our enemies and people we don't even know, it'll actually show them the number of opens in sequence. So it's amazing when we see our competitors and they're like, open it up like over twenty times and we meet them in public and they try to turn like, "Oh, I didn't even read the newsletter, I have no idea what's about that." And we're like, "Really? Hmm." We don't call them out on it necessarily, of course, this isn't a fucking camera right now, but we're looking it up on my phone with my MailChimp app and we just crush it. And by the way, when you go past two thousand emails, and we're gonna have around ten to twelve thousand within the first month alone, and you go past two thousand, you actually start having to pay. MailChimp is free to have the first two thousand emails in there for a certain number of cents. After that, we gotta pay, and it's not too bad, it's anywhere from about thirty to a hundred and ninety-nine dollars if you max out the account as it is. So it's an expense, but it is a fantastic tool. Uh, as far as the press page, we don't have this open right now, but it actually will show you the stats for Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, and the link to LinkedIn itself. Uh, right now on Facebook, I think we only have about a hundred and twenty people that have actually done this, but we haven't really been pushing that hard. So after this meeting, do us a favor, like the page if you haven't, and feel free to recommend it to other people. As far as Twitter, and I've always fucking hated Twitter. The only reason Twitter honestly is alive at this point is because of Trump and we can blame him for that too. If there's anything wrong with this president, see, it's a fact. I'm not gonna lie, like I had a Twitter account for a personal life, I didn't make any updates until 2013, I only like three. And we use Twitter for other things where basically if you post to Facebook or Instagram or even a website, it will auto repost into the actual Twitter.
But it makes no sense.
Oh yeah, and by the way, as far as followers, we are going to follow every single one of the politicians in California for a start, every single fucking one of them. If you want to see what they're up to, I also want to let them know that we're watching. Uh, when it comes to Instagram, there's an interesting story behind this. There was an organization up in Santa Cruz that we were helping to build out. Santa Cruz Normal in essence. And they decided not to pay their bills. They refused to pay us for a thousand dollars worth of t-shirts that Joey and I personally paid for ourselves and they were very dysfunctional and they had all this stuff we'd helped set up for them, so we were like, "Fuck that." And we took the page, we blanked out all of the comments that Christina had basically been putting out there to actually post, to actually do the job that they weren't doing. And that's why the Instagram account has over two thousand two hundred followers already for us and we only have one picture in there, so it's an artificial number, it's not real if you look at it because we said, "You know what, we're not just throwing this away, we're taking this fucker over and we're gonna rebrand it or something." So the question is, are you a candidate? That's it. Uh, when we start posting through Instagram, we're gonna have a huge hit off of that because in our industry for cannabis-sized things, that's pretty much what everybody talks on social media. Uh, Facebook is kind of in the middle and Twitter is only for politicians and people that want to make quotes, but we're gonna cover all the bases. And it's a lot of tedious fucking work and honestly, there was a great movie, well, not a great movie, there was a great ending to a movie called Escape from LA. Where at the end, this guy, Snake Liskin, he hits this button that sends off these EMP satellites that fucking wipes out all the electronics, so it's like a Luddite's perfect dream where you just get rid of anything that's electrical and he resets the planet. If I could do that with social media, I would fucking do that in heartland, I hate social media, I absolutely do. Doesn't mean I'm not good at it, it just means I hate it. Uh, and we're gonna crush it as it is right now. And with the YouTube, we have built out playlists for the national, international, and all the states. So it actually goes into the website or the pages. Anytime there's an interesting YouTube video that has to do with the state, you put it in there because we're trying to talk to everybody else in the union as it is. And this is just to do our own heavy lifting on that.
Yeah, just a side note, if you ever find any YouTube news bit that looks good, put it in the SE of infrastructure. So I can grab it and I can put it into the playlist, like some of the help just coming and gathering everything could be super dope. So we all have.
Put the Google videos.
Go back to the press for a second, go back to the press one.
You can just do like anonymous Google page.
Scroll down, so this is our, our press page by the way, which gives all the basic information. Uh, we already provided the logos as it is, but. We already provided the logos as it is with our Adobe Illustrator files. So that people in the press world, if they need our logo for anything, they can grab all of it. It's all in there. There's videos on the actual fonts that we use. In fact, here, play the Gotham one real quick and widescreen it. It's only like a minute. So we chose this one because Obama was totally down for it and they used it in the campaign. It's a very versatile font. It's gorgeous. It's clean. It's simple. And that, as far as our actual style guide for this organization. I like style guides. Like, Apple uses a style guide, for instance. It gives everything that we basically need and it's slick and it's lean. So we want the press to take us as serious as possible and it's an issue, a cannabis issue, because they like to snicker as it is. So, yeah. And then, um...
It's a little long in the notes.
Yeah, go down a bit. Go down a bit more. Yeah, and the reason why we chose the color teal is because it's basically between green and blue. And it's not offensive and nobody else uses teal for anything as it is. I never thought I would ever use teal for anything in my entire life, but here we are. Christina made a valid argument for it. So there you go. Yeah, two thousand two hundred followers and we have that one little picture, but it's artificial. I have no idea why the Facebook plan is a loss.
We just got a team for it afterwards.
There you go. So any questions on infrastructure as it is? Because that's pretty much what we're using for everything tonight. Anything at all? You guys are all in, so it should be good as it is.
Does everyone have access to the Slack to get ideas on what to... Post on social media and stuff, especially like the YouTube thing, things like that?
What was that?
The Slack, the SC Infrastructure?
That's an open channel, so if you're not a part of it, that would just be going to channels the one plus nine, doing it like you did with the zero one Slack.
And we'll have another infrastructure meeting, a private one at my place coming up in about a week or two, to actually review the website. All we do is we'll go in there and we go through every page and we check it on the computers and on our actual cell phones to make sure they load. If the pages don't load quickly or there's problems with it, we need to know so we can fix that so we don't lose people that are looking at our site. So we're gonna be paying a lot of attention to this and we're spending a lot of time on search engine optimization as well. Because we got this nice little app, Squishy, that basically takes like a three megabyte picture and turns it down to like, you know, like a hundred and fifty K. So it loads very quickly on the phones. And the faster your page loads, the better you get a search engine optimization score down the line. So we're paying a lot of attention to that right now.
As well too, if you ever see anything, especially on your phone, because everyone's gonna have a different sized phone. It's gonna squish the page down and stuff like that. I can only take you through accounts, certain things like... It'll show different on Ryan's phone than my phone, the little six plus. So every single different follower will give the different interpretation. So that's how I can catch some of the little edits to make so everyone gets the same.
Alright, moving on to item number nine. Issues, we don't have a chair for the Subcommittee yet. Those of you who are interested, let me know after the meeting and we'll talk about it. Issues, anything that you think we should be paying attention to that would help the actual politics of candidates, let us know. So for example, Senator Cory Booker, he introduced a bill to legalize marijuana. This wouldn't be the first time a senator or congressman has tried to do that. They generally get not the best turnout because obviously it's not legal yet, but people are making that effort. We had a chance to go collectively as an organization whether to back this and I'm pretty sure we're gonna say yes, because that would be great. So watch that. That's a link to an actual video where he introduces it.
You got a project?
Probably not right now because we don't have enough time for that.
That's kind of long.
Goes into it. But the next one, this is ranked choice voting, so I'm gonna pass this around. This is something I think collectively we should do. It's cheaper for the political system and the economy as it is. This guy named Baz from the Drew Glover campaign actually brought this to my attention up in Santa Cruz. And it's a fantastic system. Yes.
What does it benefit the cannabis public?
Um, because honestly, it benefits democracy in general and anything that's more efficient, we can take advantage of and it's one of the things I think we should support and it doesn't cost us anything in money. It's just basically saying we're down for the cause. And if we help promote them, it's just better. That's honestly...
But you could say that about a lot of things, you know what I mean? Like, there's a lot of great causes out there. Shouldn't we be focused in on the issues that are really significant to you?
Well, that's the thing. Like, see, an issues chair, you can bring issues to the table. We can go behind it. In all honesty, the reason why it's more of a Democrat issue than even a Republican one. I think the country as a whole will be better with a fair ballot system like that. And that gives the Democrats an advantage. Remember, it's not just cannabis, but both Democrats at the same time. Anything that gives the Democrats an advantage right now is key. Because the 2018 midterms that are coming up, it's gonna be a fucking bloodbath for the Republicans. Trump is not being a good leader because there are more divisive and fighting and publicly destroying each other than I've ever seen in anything. Not even the Democrats back in the day, between the Hillary and Bernie war, compares to what's going on right now with Republicans. So anything that brings them pain is honestly good for us.
Does ranked choice vote eliminate the runoff between the two?
It's automatic, so you don't have to go to a certain level that's cheaper.
Right now, we have top two. So what it does is, it puts more candidates into play. Because when you squish down to less candidates, then everything just kind of mushes in the middle. But if it stays an open field because of ranked choice voting, then it's a little more room for issues to play.
I think it's a little bit bad in this guy to say that. Like, I think if you're gonna focus on something that's like an institutional change to the way like elections are run, my garden should be something like automatic voter registration like you were talking about earlier. But maybe we can kick that conversation.
We need to downslide it.
Yeah, that's the thing. We don't have a chair for somebody to do that, so I'm not taking the stand. I'm just giving this as an example of something right forth. For example, one I wouldn't wanna take on right now. I'm not down for necessarily... The war between pro-life, pro-choice, forced sterilization of like ninety percent of the population, that really doesn't do like any benefit for us as the candidates to jump on board with those issues. Those are super, super, super specific that I don't necessarily see us getting advantage on. But other things, for example, we're gonna have to discuss pesticides in a big way. So the problem is in Salinas Valley Core. We've been dealt with pesticides for seventy years and did that shit. And right now, the cannabis industry is getting beaten up for it. But the really scary thing is the farm industry. They're gonna come to terms with it in a bad way because it's just gonna simply cost them more money to actually have healthier food. They're gonna have higher prop loss. It's not gonna be as nice as what they want, but technically healthier. So it's an issue and the cannabis thing kind of like overlays into it. So for example, Dominic, you brought up earlier, how did your resolution go for voting?
Uh, it's a resolution encouraging the Department of Pesticide Regulation and the state legislature to ban chlorpyrophosphate. It was an organophosphate that was supposed to be banned by the EPA. It was well on its way to being banned under the Obama administration. And of course, with the new administration, science became bad. So the EPA literally said, "That study we did for the past two years was garbage and we're gonna do it again." And so I worked with some environmental groups and get the statewide Democratic Party to pass a resolution asking those two institutions to institute a ban.
And it passed?
And it passed.
But we're now...
Well, it's, so it's a resolution and so all it does is affirm the ideals of a party, which a lot of people don't pay attention to. But where it gets you is if you have a resolution, then you start thinking, and as we're coming up to an election year, can we get something on the platform? Something like this, then it becomes a battle. Because I doubt the party wants to explicitly say ban chlorpyrophosphate. But it's a tool and a mechanism to work within the party to get those things we want. So we might not necessarily be able to get a platform, but at least we have a resolution that we can spread awareness to the activists within the party. There are a lot of new people working within the party at the executive board level and at the assembly delegate level. A little bit of influence, but more importantly, these are the people who volunteer on campaigns. These are the people who are becoming the campaign coordinators, the staff outreach people. They're the ones who wanna influence now. The next meeting's gonna be an executive board meeting at Milbrae in November. There'll be nothing but party insiders there. So if there was a big cannabis issue we had, where we wanna reach out to all the gubernatorial candidates, then we'll open them. Attorney General candidates, Dave Jones will be there. I didn't see Becerra at the last one. But basically, if you wanna talk to party insiders plus people running, that's a good place I would take. You know, because you could talk to the...
We need to make a list of all the basic Democratic events that we can get tables at. And we should actually start assigning people to table events is. And we should also take a list of all the resolutions. And we should also consider what resolutions we would want for ourselves. Because if we do a good job with the Democrats, they'll actually back us as well, so...
And one of the members of the Resolutions Committee is a cannabis consultant. Nicholas Caston, because cannabis lobbying.
Put it, Nicholas Caston?
Caston. I'll pass on this info to you. But when we were talking about my resolution, he was like, "Oh, I do lobbying for cannabis." I was like, "Well, I have a few questions for you." So we got at least one definite ally of the Resolutions Committee.
Solid. Okay, as far as the issues, you can check out the website, preparevote.ca.org. And you can also watch the video on Cory Booker introducing the new regulations that basically say we should legalize cannabis. Marijuana is still a term they use, which is technically supposedly a racist term to a certain degree. A little bit today, no doubt. In fact, the weirdest thing is sometimes they spell it with a G and sometimes they still spell it with a H. So it's just absurd. Use the medical term cannabis. It's way better. Item number ten, that's membership. So if you've got money or you need to sign up, go to Dominic and there's a link in there for the actual signup form as it is. Harvest your basic information. That's obviously in contact. If you don't hear anything from us, perhaps you're falling into it, but you should. And we're working on actually sending confirmation emails. So in about the next week, you'll get a series of emails that say like, "Welcome to us. This is this. This is where it's at. This is when it'll expire. And this is when you have to never renew because you're a lifetime membership of five bucks." And that's it. And the only reason we did that, because we liked it in a song. So that's pretty much where that's at. Anything else on membership we wanna cover, Dominic?
We got six official paying members, so order game money today, let me know.
Alright, cool. The next Subcommittee, I actually made this one up last night. It's just merchandise. Simply because, you know, example, one group we were in, they were trying to decide on a logo and it dragged out for something like eight weeks. It was just absurd. And... That's a story I'll tell off camera. So I just said, you know, fuck it, I'll run the merchandise one. We're gonna do stickers, posters, t-shirts, and buttons. And there's actually a button machine we found in the back over here. I mean, check the sizes of it.
A sticker?
Yeah, it's, uh, Phil Bozeman's, Eric Carne's who bought it. So it's a little thing. Buttons are pretty cool. I personally love stickers because they're everywhere. I mean, you get a sticker and something there on the back of everybody's laptop and cell phone, which is solid. We'll show the designs before we print them. Joey has access to a bunch of different websites that he ended up using to print off stickers for other things. The t-shirts, that's a war that continues goes into this. And let's talk about this real quick again.
Took it to live.
To use a union printer or to not use a union printer is simply a question of how much we wanna pay. So we have friends in the music industry that promote, they can get t-shirts down to $2.71 a shirt. If we wanna use a non-union printer who's not a friend, we can get them for about $6.17 a piece. If we wanna use a union printer, it's like $8.50 to $9.00. Yes.
I know a company that made seventy-seven million t-shirts last year.
What's it called?
I know a rep two in the area that can help you out. I'll send you my card.
Excellent, excellent.
I got, just a prime example, I got soccer jerseys for our soccer team. The El Tripocuplas, we played soccer, indoor soccer in Washington. Fantastic. Our symbol was great and everything like that. And we got a mesh dry fit, like a off-brand for like, it was like $6.12 a shirt. And I got like ten of them, so... I get that cost plus five, so I've got the big catalog. I'll just ship it to you or you just get on, we'll dick around, get on simpshouse.com, just I'll let you know.
I'm gonna make any cheap fucking shirts. I want these shirts to be nice. I want them to be comfortable. I want them form fitting.
I got Hanes, Cherokee, Nike, Under Armour, Carhartt. Uh, we've got a relationship with, uh, we help you.
Alright, well, we're gonna do that. So by the way, any of these Subcommittees, if you wanna be a part of it, join the channel, get into the conversation. But we have outside meetings just for Subcommittees, like the next Infrastructure one, where we're checking out the website. That's gonna be my apartment. We're all just gonna be sitting around getting on, if you're inclined to do that. So it's a lot of fun, alright?
We accept that, I mean, very definitely.
And by the way, like, the amount of money that you make on merchandise, I don't think people realize this. You know when you go to a movie theater, you're not actually paying to see the movie. You're basically paying to buy popcorn. And then the popcorn itself from the corn industry. And keep in mind, I was born in Nebraska and it's just nothing but corn and wheat that you grow there. Now soybeans, even with soybean rust, whatever the hell. The corn gets turned into high fructose corn syrup. That goes into the sugary drinks, which makes you wanna eat more of the salty food and at the same time, salty food makes you wanna eat more drinks. So the real money of this, it's not based off of the membership of five dollars. The reason why we want that is, we want lifetime members so we never actually have to waste the time hustling people for like $20 every year. That's bullshit. And we want them to be members forever, so our membership list looks fucking huge. Even though, keep in mind, it's like iceberg principle. Like, you know when you join a gym? Or if you've ever joined a gym, one eighth of those people actually use the gym, the other seven eighths don't? That's how gyms work, you know, it's just management. The reason why, if you had that number of people in there, it would violate fire code automatically, occupancy. So it's, we're playing to that effect. If people will sign up five years in a row for gym memberships and they never fucking use, it's a beautiful thing. Yes.
And more importantly, one reason why we wanna build our membership roster is this. All the people we have on our roster who are not part of other clubs already, there's this weird little caveat called pre-endorsement meetings. The Central Committee will have to choose who the Democratic Party forces to enroll. Now, that roster for us had to have been by July 1st if we missed the deadline. But what ultimately comes down to is for every twenty members, we get one. So Salinas Valley Democrats, we have a hard time getting a hold of. Technically, we have a hundred people on the rosters. They get five votes, which is significant. If we have lifetime rosters full of people who don't belong to other clubs, when endorsements get made by the Democratic Party, this is to put those people on the door fingers which candidates wanna be on, that's one hell of a fucking act.
Yeah, we're literally voting these people in for the...
What's the, what are like the metrics by which they measure like a legitimate member of any given club? Like, what are the requirements?
All you have to be is a registered Democrat in that county. Still residing in that county and you cannot sign another club's roster. You can't be counted for two clubs.
So can someone who's in another club choose to be counted as a candidate instead?
Yes. Yes. Uh, it's just a lot of people just get counted. So the more people we have on our roster, literally, if they don't see us coming and say by next election cycle, not 2018, but by 2020, we have five hundred people.
Do you know what people have to do to be said, oh, a candidate?
You have, so they register as a Democrat. They have to be a registered Democrat within the county. And we verify that. Then we have them fill out the membership form, so it gives us a roster. So by that July 1st date, we have to send it off to the Regional Director of the Democratic Party for Region 7. Right now, that's Omar Torres. It gets sent off by July 1st because he has to take two weeks to verify who these people are.
No, but I'm saying like to his question, if you are part of two different groups and you wanna say, "I'm putting my thing towards Canada," how do they know?
It's up to the, to the club to make sure that people don't count for double things. Now, here's the reason why it hasn't really been a problem is because most of these clubs don't have massive active memberships.
I'll have to double that. Alan Hoffa actually sent me two things in Slack privately last week. There are two documents of how this is supposed to work. They're like thick documents. I will repost those. You gotta go through them because we still have to verify a lot of that stuff apparently.
How do we verify? If someone wants to join us, how do we verify that they're registered Democrats?
If you actually go in, Karen and Morocco showed me this. It's basically a website link that goes through. You can actually check it. There's just websites that check to see how you registered for your party. And they base it off of where you live. So you have to put in a...
Fivehundred dot c.
It has to be where they registered to vote. Because a lot of people will move where they live, but they're still registered to vote in like some other county or some other state, so...
We can play it safe. Just go to SOSCA.gov, re-register now. If we, if people comply. But one thing I do need to check is if those rosters are active membership. Because I know progressive Dems might have this huge long list, but there's only ever ten of us who ever show up. But because they have nearly dues, that might be why their list is small. We're the only club who doesn't have nearly dues.
We have lifetime.
So that could be a game changer.
We have lifetime, so it's like everyone, like, they're in that list. They're pretty much...
So like the five dollar lifetime membership, we give that your email and the thing, we can count that person for a vote on the endorsement.
If they're not casting themselves here.
And they're within one right now.
Still have to... That is just, how the weapon is used.
I have a question that I wanna bring it back to the newsletter real quick. You said you could reach like ten, twelve thousand people. How many people there are local who could become like members of our local chapter?
Um, well, here's the thing, at the national level...
How many people can be reached, generally speaking, locally?
Locally, the Monterey County one itself, as far as people that live in this area, it's probably around a thousand four hundred, but the Monterey County normal itself talks to about two thousand three hundred. As far as the total list of all the normal chapters we helped set up, it's more like around three thousand four hundred in California. The list that we're pulling from is basically everyone who's in the cannabis industry, it's not necessarily politically involved at all. These are, these are much bigger players as it is. These are people on dispensaries, delivery services, brands, manufacturing, et cetera, and that's a national list. So the idea is establish as many chapters as possible, once we get the formula figured out here and working properly. So for example, and this literally leads into the next agenda item number twelve. The Canada's school, the next formal chapter is gonna be in Santa Cruz. And our friend Pat Mallow, he's gonna be the one who runs that one as it is. And he can't be here tonight, because they have a big EIR, it's an environmental impact review meeting up in Santa Cruz. But we get that county turned on next. The third one is technically San Francisco and the fourth one is technically Los Angeles. And Los Angeles is a Mecca. The number of members we'll end up having in Los Angeles, it'll dwarf every other club, no matter what, just because of how big that place is and how much action it is. That'll end up becoming pretty much the most powerful one as far as the membership base. And keep in mind, between the Democratic Party, the wars between San Francisco Bay Area and Los Angeles County, they don't give a fuck about any of the other counties outside of them. So this is our first primary one, we figure out, we really run the national thing here. But technically, we have a club in San Francisco, which is awesome, and we also have the one down in LA. We can begin influencing the real Democratic Party controllers in this state. And I don't know where number five, I think, maybe Colorado or some shit, we haven't gone that far. Yes.
The one thing to point out too, though, is in other areas, if we're trying to turn on clubs, it may not exactly work like ours. Our area had room on the central committee to add a club. To have clubs chartered by the central committee, it's all based on membership. Based, or based on how many Democrats are registered in your county. So based on the number of Democrats we have within Monterey County, the central committee was able to have like, I think, six or seven. I gotta get the exact number of registered Democrats you need in order to have another chartered club. So we might run into a county where they're full of chartered clubs, but because of the financing, that'll still be like the club we use. But we might not necessarily have that pre-endorsement to use in all counties.
Alright, anything else on item twelve, because Dominic asked me about that. Item thirteen, upcoming events. Already went over this winning ways thing, in fact, I'll pass this around. It's pretty much a flyer of what they're gonna go with. And the other one is bending the art of justice, which is on October twentieth. That's pretty much the big gala for all of the central committee. And I've been talking to Alan Hoffa on Monterey Doms channel itself in Slack, the separate Slack. And they're trying to figure out who's controlling the actual event right and a couple of other details. So we'll see. It's with Jimmy Panetta, he's gonna be speaking there, it's about a hundred, a hundred fifty bucks or something?
One twenty-five.
Yeah.
One twenty-five.
What's it, R. Mill?
It's at the Hyatt.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Next M.P.S.
So that'll be an interesting event, if you wanna go there, do that.
Hyatt's got a nice sports bar, actually.
Not a coaster bar.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be like right there.
So there's a link to that, if you wanna join it, go for it, you can spot it. Does anyone know of any other upcoming events worth adding to this, that we should be letting our people know, like big events that make sense?
Agfa is having their thirtieth anniversary, I think, in October. At Al Sals Center for the Fine Arts. The reason why I say, uh, to go is that DACA protest that happened on North and Sanborn, whatever you read in the paper about Central Labor Council, Democratic Party taking the lead, they said the date and time, but it was groups, community groups like kids from Al Sals Center for the Fine Arts, Artists Inc. They, they can get people out when they want to. They're completely disconnected from the Democratic Party. But they do have one hell of a following on these sites and these. You know, it's only twenty bucks a ticket, I think, but it's definitely some people you wanna meet. These are like artists, creative types, that are doing stuff all over Salinas artistically wise. That event that happened in Salinas yesterday, yeah, that was them. So, yeah.
How many people signed up that?
About seventy-five to a hundred.
Um, I would flag, and I can't think of the exact date right now, I'll get it to you. You and maybe you can let people know, Resist Fest is the big indivisible thing, they're gonna like take over, like part of downtown Santa Cruz, and just have a ton of like issue discussions and breakout groups and it's gonna be like music, food trucks, like it's gonna be cool.
So is it gonna like, be like that thing, the Poor People's Campaign in Chicago or whatever, but we'll just have it here in Santa Cruz?
I'm not familiar with that.
What's that event they have in Chicago every year?
The People Summit?
The People Summit, so that'll be like our little...
Honestly, I think that's probably their model, but it's not gonna be as organized.
Alright, um, any events you guys have, you can always turn this in later, in case you have to contact me and we'll plug it in.
I have a bunch that I...
Yeah, we just, we really wanna have a good list of these things, because the other thing is, a lot of the clubs aren't supporting the other clubs, fight like reposting or showing off their events, so we have to take care of that.
Oh, isn't there like a...
Like a Halloween party?
No, there is, for Dems.
I don't know, I saw it on Facebook.
But I'll give my opinion on that.
Yes. We'll get it. Alright, so item fourteen, next Canada's, it's the first Wednesday of every month, it's October fourth, same place, same time. And you can RSVP on Facebook, I really prefer you do that, because the more people that RSVP, the better it looks over trying to go for that whole like crowd mentality thing.
Or it's not, even if you're a customer. In-person subcommittee meetings, you mentioned the one in your department, is there, and what's the date and time on that and is there any other?
Well, we're gonna actually use a poll app that we have in Slack, that asks people about the events. Generally, if there's no major events going on on the weekend, it'll be like, you know, Saturday in the middle of the day. If there's some stuff going on, it may be like Sunday late at night or maybe like Thursday. So we're just trying to figure out who's in there, what their schedules work like, and then we'll work around it. And my place is pretty comfortable, I mean, it's right about Canterbury Road, smoke our asses off. We will drink like fiends. Yeah, it's a good time. It's very productive, actually, I like the working meetings. And then, yeah, gentlemen, I know we're fourteen minutes over, but I hope you guys had a good time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the cheeses.
Any other comments, anything else? You guys good? Thank you, and dip the waders, man.
Yeah. But I do bark tends to come to be does have beer.